Mr. Enders is going to lay this in. I pledge allegiance to our republic, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll, this consent agenda is like quite a few bills that will pull on, so we'll do this in very different motions, so we'll get that there. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including the meeting agenda, the August financial fund balance statement, minutes of the August 16 regular meeting, updated substantive teacher, and sub bus driver listing, payment of monthly bills excluding payments to Casey Merrifield, Cooper Lumber, Larry Benson, and Jeff Ellison. Anyone want to make that motion, please? Mark makes a motion over second. Michael seconds. All those in favor? Carry seven oh. Next, I need a motion to approve payments to Casey Merrifield and Cooper Lumber. Michael makes a motion. Mark seconds. All those in favor? Be five with extensions by Treadway and Cleveland. Next, I need motions to approve payments to Larry Benson and Jeff Ellison.
Make that motion.
Mr. Treadway makes a motion over second. Mark seconds. All those in favor? Carries five oh with two extensions, strong and Ellison. All right, next, we'll go into our communications, MSBA monthly board report.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of September. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the search for a permanent commissioner of education here in Missouri. Now that the State Board of Education has a quorum and can conduct business again, is resuming the search for a new commissioner of education following the removal of Margie Van Deven as commissioner last December. The State Board of Education appointed Dr. Roger Dorson as interim commissioner at that time, and the State Board of Education President Charlie Shields told board members at last month's State Board meeting, "There's no rush to name a permanent commissioner since the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education continues to function very well."
Yeah, I think Commissioner Dorson is doing a fabulous job leading the department. So, the last thought is that there's not a burning platform here that says we have to rush into any decisions regarding the commissioner. Well, I would ask, I think I asked you at the June meeting to think about the characteristics. I'd ask you not to report back on what you believe the characteristics are, but I would think to come back at the September meeting, report back on what you think those characteristics are, but also how you think, as board members, we should proceed in this discussion.
There was also some preliminary discussion at the August State Board meeting about the state funding requests for the fiscal year beginning next July. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education staff is proposing the State Board request full state funding for student transportation over a nine-year period beginning next year. Right now, there's about a $200 million shortfall in state funding for student transportation. Local school districts have had to assume a greater share of transportation costs over the years, and state funding in that area has declined. MSBA has advocated strongly for increased state funding for student transportation. MSBA President Mike Pratt testified on school safety issues during a recent meeting in Chicago hosted by Deputy Secretary of Education Mitchell Zayas. Pratt said, "There's a strong need for synchronization among agencies responsible for safety." He said, "States as well as federal agencies with responsibility for school safety need an effective program to immediately message down to school districts any high-level threat potentially impacting school children." Pratt also said, "There's a need to have assessment tools to understand and rank the full scope of school safety risk beyond just the active shooter risk." MSBA's recommendations will be provided to the Federal Commission on School Safety. MSBA administers the Center for Education Safety, the only statewide school safety organization in the state. CES is built on the premise that school safety is best addressed through a comprehensive, community-wide approach. A number of new state laws related to public education took effect at the end of August, as is often the case, following the end of the legislative session in May. And that means MSBA's Policy Department has been working to create new policies or update existing policies for school boards throughout the state. MSBA Associate Executive Director Kelly Hopkins oversees MSBA's Policy Department, and she says, "Policy updates are designed with a goal in mind."
Obviously compliance. Obviously, legal compliance is the first thing we consider. We also want to include enough information in our policies that districts will understand what the law means and what their policy says without having to call an attorney, although they're welcome to call us if they have questions.
Hopkins says, "Policy updates are also designed to support boards in making informed decisions and to protect school districts from making costly and damaging mistakes." Latest policy update from MSBA addresses a new virtual education law, elections, whistleblower protection, gifted education, school counseling, and other issues. All MSBA member school boards receive basic policy updates, while some 240 school boards throughout the state participate in a more customized policy service. MSBA's annual school personnel information survey is now open. This survey collects information on the wages, salaries, and benefits of teachers and other school employees to help boards and administrators make fully informed personnel decisions. MSBA member districts that complete the survey and submit their salary schedules and collective bargaining agreements by November 12th this year receive free access to the data collected. Make sure your district's information is included in this year's database. Your school district staff can submit your district's information through the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Reminder that the MSBA conference is next week. We've talked about that a couple of times, but it starts next Wednesday from Miss Parson. Everybody else starts Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our A-Board Spotlight.
So, we have a couple of different people, and I'll let Mr. Dalton be the first.
We would like to recognize Mrs. Julie Taylor this evening. I do want to emphasize, she prefers to work behind the scenes and not be called out here. Has done a tremendous amount of work on our new school website. Single-handedly built it this summer. We started that project, I'm saying we, I think I made promises that ended up like I couldn't keep, so parts of the website you love know that she did. Parts that there are issues with know that it was probably me. She's still going back and trying to correct some of the stuff that I tried to correct, but just does a tremendous amount of work on that, and it goes throughout the year. She did a lot of, put in tons of time above and beyond this summer to get it built, and we hear lots of positive feedback.
You know, we need, I try to send Mrs. Taylor's pictures, and the next day, they're up, and we appreciate that. Just, I've known Mrs. Taylor for 18 years, and she is diligent. If she's anything, she's diligent. She makes sure if her name's going to be on, it's going to be done right, and it's going to be done on time. So, I appreciate her far and above her stipend that she's paid to take care of the website. She's been far and away, far and above the average, and she keeps that down, and so we just appreciate you.
Thank you.
How do you have to put this one on there? Our next spotlight is Missouri Ozzards Community Health, and CEO Tim Schreick, as early as, as late as yesterday, had planned to be here. He got hung up against meetings in St. Louis that ran long, and he did not get back here. But, I think it goes without saying, having a facility and a group like Missouri Ozzards in our community is a blessing to us. Mr. Ellison and I both have the pleasure of sitting on that board of directors and getting to hear the things that they are doing in our community from the health fair before school started. We get 47 haircuts at the health fair, just school supplies. We talk about our school supply drive, but Missouri Ozzards is right there with just making sure kids have immunizations, they feel good about themselves, and things are going well. They donate money to us, if parents can't pay, that is never an issue with Missouri Ozzards. They take care of the parent, they take care of the kid. They just purchased a new dental bus this summer. That dental bus will be parked in front of our elementary school for three weeks, I believe, in November through December, and we'll see kids K-12. They just are constantly looking for ways to partner with us, and I think as a school district, we need to be sure that we appreciate them for what they do, and I know I do. I just wanted to bring that. I don't think we all know everything that they do, but they donate $2,000 off the top, top with co-pays, top with anything with health-related with kids. And we always go over that $2,000, and they never say we're, that's just standard. So, anything you'd like to say?
No, it's just a great organization, and really the health drive, the pictures and the race that participated in.
My wife participated in. I helped turn, tell her to turn. She didn't win her division, though.
But they just continually support our school throughout the whole year, and they've just done a tremendous job, so we thank them very much.
And they don't want anything in return. They don't care about that. Anyway.
Next, we'll go into the principal and director reports. Elementary Principal Dr. Hall.
So, today we announced that all the heels took every student, grades K through four. It was very well done. Hope it was a memorable experience for our students, even though they're very young, which that's something they'll carry with them throughout their life, and, you know, just want to brag on. They received multiple compliments from people working in the event about how well-behaved our children were out there. I think it's just a great experience for them.
Thank you. Mrs. Swash is covering Vol. Dr. Nash.
We're gearing up for homecoming week next week. We have a full week of activities planned, Friday being our big day where we are going to have a pep symphony. Our parade starts at 2:40, and we'll go up around the square, and then we have our game at 7:00, and then a dance afterwards, so Friday's a big day for us. I appreciate what our clubs and our students have done for the wall project. High school will be going tomorrow. We had a student, Stephen Copeland, who had an NHS senior project, and he sold chili and raised almost $500 to go to the wall. Prom Committee has sold t-shirts, and then we have a lot of clubs that are donating time this weekend, so we appreciate what they do.
Mrs. Swash.
Good evening. I just want to thank Cherry Miller, our early childhood special education teacher. She's been very busy. She's gotten out into preschool and Head Start, and has identified 10 kids this week that need further testing, so I appreciate how diligently she's been to identify these kids quickly into the school year.
Thank you.
Couple of different things. First, I'd like to introduce our new school resource officer. He's been with us since the first day of school, but as of about 6 o'clock tonight, he became a school employee, so Officer Brandon Reed. Brandon has kind of a wide variety of skills. He has been a Douglas County deputy, he was a reserve deputy prior to that, he's worked, he's been a manager in retail. Sheriff DeGee says he is tactically the best officer on the, best shot in the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. We finally got a car here, and a vehicle here that he can use, so he has assisted principals already, you know, four weeks into school with investigations, kids with, just needed somebody to talk to. He's a liaison between law enforcement. His office is the old superintendent's office. If you walk in the door on this side, his office is right there on the right. He is seen all over campus, all day long, so we appreciate him, and we appreciate him, his willingness to serve our students, and we look forward to many years to come. So, he was, drug identification training today. Today, tomorrow. Today, tomorrow. Why he was here, Deputy Johnson filled in that role, and he said he did not want to do that every day, but he's willing to fill in when he needs to. And then, in October, he's going to SRO training that the sheriff's office is actually funding, so we appreciate that. So, we have good partnership. He'll be commissioned by the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. They will supply his equipment, they will supply his uniforms, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Update on enrollment. So, September 17 versus September 18. Pre-K, we're up five students. We have 56 students in pre-K program. At the elementary level, we are up three kids from 448 to 451. At the middle school, we're up 10 students from 414 to 424. At the high school is actually down three students. So, K-12 enrollment is up 10 total students, and we have 1,307. We had 1,297 a year ago at this time, and pre-K through 12 is up 15 students, because you saw that increase in pre-K. So, good numbers, we like that. Those will fluctuate all throughout the year, but we have, I've been here three years, we've grown over a year that I've been here, so that's a great thing. Parking lots, as you know, the first day of school, we figured out we didn't have enough parking spaces, so if you drive back in the back, we are adding two different parking lots, one behind my office that will help the middle school, and one back behind the buses that will house sophomore students, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Dr. Nash, when we run out of spaces here, sophomores will park back behind the buses, so that should be done, those parking lots should be finished tomorrow. So, we're thankful for that. Elementary school received a national award, and it's one of America's healthiest schools. I'm going to read just these couple paragraphs. "A total of 461 schools nationwide were selected based on a rigor set of criteria, from availability of nutritious foods to access to high-quality physical education opportunities. As part of the Healthier Generation's Healthy Schools Program, Ave Elementary is among 19 schools in Missouri to receive this recognition. Ave Elementary earned the bronze level last year, but moved up to silver level this year. Total of 461 schools recognized as America's healthiest schools, 355 bronze, 93 silver, and 13 gold." We're very proud of Ave Elementary. It's one of 93 schools at the silver level to be recognized out of 42,000 schools that the Alliance of Healthier Generation serves. So, we are absolutely happy with what teachers are doing. Obviously, this is all driven, really driven by Ann Leonard. She does a great job, has a passion for it. We're thankful that we received a continuation grant at the high school, so, you know, we've been working with K-8 for five years, and now we're going to be able to move some of those programs up to high school as well. So, it's exciting for us. So. Do a short financial update. Things really look good. Again, if you look at the far right, you'll look at the budgeted dollars that I had, so we budgeted 1,366 weighted ADA at 6241, and as you know, I budget fairly conservatively, but we're coming in right now in September, where our weighted ADA is 1,380, and 6241 is the SAT, that state adequacy target. So, and you have to, so Roger Dorson is the commissioner of education, but he's also the commissioner, he's also the deputy commissioner of finance. Roger's very conservative. He never moves the SAT until he knows it's going to hold. It will never, he's not going to move it up from 6241 until he knows it's going to hold. He believes it's going to hit 6308, but we probably won't start seeing that number till after Christmas, which is okay. I would rather have that than him drop it later, so we're really comfortable about where we are. Our Prop C dollars really exploded in, they're always low in July, but they really exploded in August and have held good in September. Transportation's up a little bit, actually, which is a great thing. So, overall, I'm very happy with what we're seeing on the financial side. We're $90,000 ahead of target today. We got our payment today, so we're $90,000 ahead. I predict that to be quite a bit above that, but we'll, again, we'll hold conservative until we start seeing those dollars. Okay? Any questions about that update? Um, see if I have it. Oh, do that. So, MSBA update was, some other stuff happened with the State Board this week. On Tuesday, well, last week, there was a special session. Peter Hershen was appointed by the governor, but a senator out of St. Louis threatened to filibuster all of the nominations, so the governor went ahead and pulled Peter. Peter is our rep on the State Board. He served 25-plus years on that State Board, was removed from previous government, but was put back by Governor Parson. So, he is not on the State Board today, but Ron Richard, who's a pro temp in the Senate, is encouraging the governor to go ahead and reappoint him, and they'll deal with it in January. They'll go ahead and do his confirmation hearing in January. So, we have seven of eight members, and President Shields talked about not a big hurry to hire commissioner. Something changed, because they posted the job Wednesday. So, they're looking to have a commissioner in place by January. That's open for about, the commissioner's job is open for about 30 days, then they're going to go into the interview process, hopefully have somebody selected by the first of December, start of January. So, just, just wanted you to know that there's been an update since MSBA, or since they sent the video. Wall of Heels came through, 500 motorcycles, a great experience, is hot, but they did a great job of trying to coordinate with us and let us know when they were going to be here. It was a 13-mile-long procession. They were getting into town and getting on 5 Highway, up on, off 60. It was, it was long, so just appreciate them to include us as a school district.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dobbs.
A few things I want to add there, John. Couple additions that we've really been working towards for this year, and we've got in place and going. We required a dyslexia screening. We had taken that on, for all students grades K through four. Kindergarten students, you don't screen them, as early, they're still learning how to read, so we do that mid-year. But at this point, grades 1 through 4, Dr. Hall, I believe, we had those, that first round of screenings, those have been completed. We're organizing, getting information home, going to start having multiple meetings, just to share information with parents. You know, as students go through these screenings, it doesn't necessarily mean that a student is dyslexic, it just means that we're going to, or we're going to identify some areas that could mean that, but the very least, some areas where we know what to address to help them read at the grade level. So, as we go through that, there'll be some students, it might just be some minor interventions and strategies, and then there'll be some students that may be some more intensive warrant and strategies that take place to help them get to read at the grade level. So, we, a lot of positive feedback, I know it's early in the year, but I hear a lot of positive information also about the students that are already kind of working through some of those interventions and programs we have in place. Another program that talked a lot about last year, and did a lot of work with, was Suicide Prevention and Awareness Program. We've got some programs in place, our counselors and building principals put a lot of work into preparing for this, organizing this, and working together, really. Our counselors have done a tremendous job of mapping out so they can be on site. Letters go home to every, the parent of every student that might be involved, opting in or out of participation in that program. Counselors have coordinated so that everybody can be on site and end up with those buildings when those conversations are taking place. We do feel like the program that we selected, after looking at several different ones, it's been positive for our students. There's some skills that they're going to take out of that, just can benefit in multiple ways, you know, whether it's reaching out and helping, asking for help for themselves, or recognizing signs in their classmates and friends that, you know, "Hey, my buddy," or "My friend might, maybe you picked me up today." So, we appreciate the work our counselors and teachers and principals have done on that. Another thing I wanted to touch on, Dr. Dobbs, I want to contribute a little bit on this. Our APR data, which we remember last year, every year, basically kind of a scoring system for state schools. We're anticipating that later on in the follow-up. We'll see, right now, end of October is when we're supposed to get our first look at that data. I sat in on a meeting, I believe Monday, at the Federal Programs Conference, where they're outlining some of the changes, which you remember what that has looked like in the past compared to what this may look like now, so what they're talking about is every school, based on, again, academic achievement, student attendance, safe factors, basically every school's going to get a score. It'll be ranked based on that score. Bottom 5% of those schools are going to be identified as comprehensive, and that's, that's not a lot different from once, maybe, like, maybe the scoring is a little different, but, you know, if you fell in that place, you know, you were identified for, you're going to have some really specific areas to address. Something we are monitoring, and this is from the federal level, districts and other states are dealing with, comprehensive is the first category. Then they have another category that's considered targeted. I want to talk about our subgroups, and again, when we have our information, I'll get more in detail with mapping out exactly what this means for us. But for us, subgroups are going to be students receiving special services, free interviews, those are examples of subgroups, you know, just different, if you have a certain number of students that.
Takes 30.
Meet those, meet that criteria, and 30 is the number. What we're monitoring, what's being proposed, is if you have a subgroup that is achieving whatever that cut is for entire districts, you would also be identified as targeted, is what they're calling it. If the entire district would receive a designation, you would have to go in, there's some criteria that would have to be met. Some other states that are a little further along with getting their test data back, we have as many as 50% of their districts meeting this criteria. That's hot. And again, just because maybe the small group is, well, this is struggling, we feel like districts in us specifically, if we have areas where, you know, we're always trying to help all of our student populations, you know, if we have a group that was struggling, you know, you're putting interventions in place to try to, to try to increase whatever that area was, whether it's attendance or student achievement, or whatever that area was, whether you were low, it's just this designation, everybody's watching it closely now. I sat in on that meeting on Monday.
So, a little bit of the information on cut scores, so that where, what level each student is on. So, the department, the board, the State Board does not set the cut score, the department sets the cut score, and there's been several, lots of information going throughout, super grants in the state, about how the department is creating, is developing those cut scores for this year. It seemed to be quite. It seemed to be quieter than usual. We had a teacher, we had one teacher involved, Gina Wood was involved in the middle school level. So they gave, the staff at DESI gave that information to the State Board on Tuesday, and President Shields put a halt on it at this point. He had obviously gotten lots of information from teachers and administrators across the state, and he asked the Department to go back, to do a better job of including our professional educators throughout the state in developing those cut scores, not to do it behind a closed door, but to actually do it and get participation from more people. So I applaud him for that, that's really where it needs to be. It needs to be in the hands of the people that do the work every day and know our kids better than anybody. So I appreciate that from him. MSIP 5, which has been around for a long time, we're trying to move to MSIP 6, there's just a lot of transition. Some of it is mandated by our state, some of it is ESSA, which is federal mandate that took place at No Child Left Behind, which everybody's familiar with, No Child Left Behind, but it's gone, and now it's ESSA. And there were a lot of things in ESSA at the federal level that I'm not sure everybody quite understood until they got here. And it sets, it set several states, several Commissioners of Education's and states back on their heels to try to figure out how to meet some of those requirements. There are some great things about ESSA, and there are some things that I'd still rather have No Child Left Behind. So isn't that always true with any new law? So, anyway, that would kinda be my wrap up.
And it is, identifying areas we need to work on and improve on, it's the wrong work, it's what we do every day. Our teachers do it in classrooms, it's what we do at the district level. We're gonna continue to monitor what that's gonna look like, and we'll keep you updated as we get information.
Something I didn't say, I just wanna update. In June, we talked about doing bus inspections, I don't wanna commend our bus drivers on that, they jumped on it. We met two weeks before school started, they organized themselves, they used our garage, but they did inspections. We had a check sheet, Mr. Vincent and I created just really what a bus inspection looks like. And he kinda coordinated those guys, but they were crawling under buses, crawling over buses, through buses, we had two board members come help as well, and thank you. But they were in, they were in to get better. We turned those inspection sheets back to every bus driver about the things that we found, and to my knowledge, everything, my understanding is everything that was found was fixed for the first day of school. So I appreciate that, I appreciate them jumping on board, we're gonna do that two weeks, two weeks before state inspection again. It's just a way to help each other, to get better. Not everybody has been a mechanic their whole life like Larry, or driven a bus for as long as Gary Harwell, they know what to look for. There's no question about, they know what to look for. So they are helping educate the newer ones, and that's really what it's about. So I just wanna thank them, they did a great job that day. Everybody showed up, we had a few buses that were in the shop, but they were being inspected at the shop for reasons, they were getting repairs, but 90% of our buses were there that day, and I appreciate that. Those that weren't, came to me and said, hey, this is why my bus isn't here, it's getting a new clutch button in. Or James Heath has it in his garage, he's put new six frames on it. You know, so, and he was doing that inspection on them as well, so I appreciate that.
Next, we'll go into discussion and action items. First, there's early retirement incentive policy, GCPD.
This is something that we have to approve every year, so it's an incentive for teachers that are thinking about retirement, and there are four of us everywhere in here. I would recommend the district continue with this policy as an incentive for teachers. Also rewards teachers who announce retirement early in the school year in efforts to obtain outstanding replacements for them. And in the same token, it does penalize teachers for late resignations. So that policy, prior to December 1st, they receive $400 extra, they receive $400 extra. Prior to January 1st, $300, prior to February 1st, $200. The penalty for late resignation, which is also in this policy, for non-tenured teachers, anywhere from May 1st to May, to May 31st, it's a $250 penalty, because they, by that time, they have received a new contract and signed that contract, like they're going to be here the next year. From June 1st to June 30th, for non-tenured, it's $500. From June 2nd to June 30th, for tenured teachers, it's $500. For, from July 1st to July 31st, for both non-tenured and tenured, it's $1,000, and after August 1st is a $2,000 penalty.
So would it be to motion approve our retirement incentive policy? Can he make some motion, do I have a second? Hold on a second, any discussion?
How long have we had that policy in place? Long time. Long time. I think since I was here before.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Area 7-0. Next, we'll do the 2018-19 Ava R1 Assessment Plan.
District Assessment Plan, basically, myself and the building councilors, really just kinda start, we sit down and outline the assessments that are used in the district throughout the year. Honestly, just kind of a head start mapping out. Partly our statewide testing that we do in the spring. Just you'll see, there's a, there's a timeline, and a kind of description of all the assessments that are used, anything from beginning, our standardized tests, when ACT dates are gonna be, assessments that are used, maybe to identify areas students need extra help in. Basically, any assessment that's used, whether in the council's office or at the building level, throughout the district, they're listed there, with kind of a description of what they're, they're used for. You'll also see a timeline there, when some of those are gonna take place. Things that are different, this year, we did change some wording. For years, when, when our EOC map test went online, the incentive was, we're gonna put the results back before the end of the year. Now, we're gonna give those back, we hope at the end of October. So there's some wording in there that we updated to reflect, as soon as those are available, we're gonna get those in parent's hands. There's some guidelines as you go by, when those come back. So that was something that was different. We did include in here, and I talked about this a little bit earlier, the assessment tool that we're using with our dyslexia screen, Ango Plus is the tool we use there, so if you see that in there, that's different. And something that is not listed there, that came out of this discussion, I know last year we talked about, the state funding changed on paying for all juniors to take the ACT. Out of that change, discussions were going through the assessment funding. We do want to reimburse any student, if they score at or above the national average, so condition of your 21 or above, we're gonna reimburse the registration fee for that assessment. So that kinda came out of, out of this discussion. That's kind of the district assessment funding, any questions on that?
I need to approve the 2018-19 Ava R1 Assessment Plan, ask for a motion. Michael makes a motion, do I have a second? 20 seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Area 7-0. Next, we'll have the 2018-19 Ava R1 Professional Development Program review.
All right. District-
Professional Development Plan. That type of thing. Professional-
Professional Development Plan.
Or, sorry. The District Professional Development Plan, it is made up of, we've got three building representatives, three teachers from each building, myself and Mr. Cleveland is on it here. Honestly, this work is done throughout the year, so all year last year, as we would have, meet the opportunities, they've been mapped out, we send out surveys, I'm sure the teachers get tired of seeing, you know, surveys from me and trying to get feedback. You know, we wanna know, was this good, did this work? What information are you looking for, what, what can we do differently? So it really kinda starts at the end of last year, we had meetings in last year, went through all those survey results, and identified areas we wanna focus on. When you read through that document, a lot of it ties back to our building C set and our overall plan that we're focused on as a district. Going through that, through that plan, going back and looking through the data, just feedback that we get from teachers, from those building reps, we outline areas of focus for the year. A lot of them are, are there year after year, and they're gonna be. You know, student engagement is, it, it better always be part of your PD plan, you know, it all starts there, like, students aren't paying attention in the days, whatever I'm doing happens, that's not, it's not gonna matter. So that's always gonna be part of it, classroom management, particularly with your, with your new teachers, it's always gonna be part of the funding. Incorporating technology more effectively, and we're talking about one to one at the high school, that is gonna be part of it, if you, you know, student access to the technology, that just becomes a more important factor as we go. The other things that we do, when we go through that plan, other than just outlining what our focus areas are gonna be, we kinda outline what our process is gonna be, you and individual teachers request to go to PD sessions that aren't held on-site. You know, there's funding available, there's plenty that the district has to use, for teachers to go to those professional development opportunities. So that committee, we kinda outline what that process is gonna look like, teachers fill out a request, terminate it from the principal, and then it comes to the committee to take action. We did something a little different this year, we had a big discussion on the front, here's how much money we think we're gonna have available, you know, funding sometimes changes and fluctuates a little bit. Okay, all right, you know, this is kinda what elementary school and middle school and high school. It didn't work from there, because, you know, we have district goals that we identified to start of the year, that we're all gonna focus on. Then each of the buildings may be a little different. High school being 1 to 1, that's, that's sometimes gonna be a priority for them. Elementary, with some of the dyslexia, the reading interventions, that's gonna be more of a focus for them. We just outlined what that process looks like. Teachers, a lot of input, and again, we, we track that throughout the year, but that plan is just kinda the over, overall theme and focus for the year, and we're gonna try to work out though.
Thank you. Need a motion and a vote to approve the 2018-19 Ava R1 Professional Development Plan. Mark makes a motion, do I have a second? 4 seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Area 7-0. Next, we'll talk about the graduation date.
Graduation date. Dr. Nash, as she does every year, has surveyed senior parents and students about their preference for graduation, and they, they would prefer a Friday evening graduation, so Dr. Nash is recommending May 11th, 2019, as this year's graduation date. I may have typed the wrong date. Cause I think I did that when you and I talked on the phone.
May 10th.
Sorry, May 10th. That, my apologies, May 10th, 2019. Thank you for catching that. Bad if we all showed up on the 11th.
So we need to approve a graduation date for May 10th, 2019. I'll make a motion. Mr. Brown makes a motion, second. 20 seconds, all those in favor? Area 7-0. Next, the MSBA policy updates for 2018.
So we had, you have 2018 B policy updates, you got, you received those last month, since you're a pretty detailed, five-page document that outlined each of those policies, and those are all critical, and that is because there was a change in federal or state law, so we really have no option on whether to approve those or not, unless we want to violate some type of state law. But they are in front of you for your approval. Just as an aside, after the agenda went out, I got 2018 C. I have uploaded it for you in the same folder as B, for you to review. We won't vote on that tonight, we'll vote on that next week or next month. And that has to do with some virtual classes and courses that kids can take, that starts January 1, but it's, we need to start preparing for it. So we'll talk more about that next month, and I'll send you some more explanation on the 2018 C update, but we need to vote on B tonight.
Okay, so need a motion, vote needed on the MSBA 2018 policy updates. Michael makes a motion, do I have a second? Mark, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Carriers, 7-0. That concludes our agenda items tonight. Thank you to everybody attending. Next, we're in the board meeting, is October 18th, 2018, at 6:30 in this board. Michael makes a motion, 20 seconds, all those in favor? Carriers, 7-0.